Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 10, 2024. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Here.
Vice Chair Priggett? Commissioner, welcome?
Here.
Chair?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
We're getting a little feedback here.
Everyone online can mute themselves.
I don't think it's online almost. Isn't?
It's muted now.
All right. This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge Allegiance, and Commissioner Allen will be leading us this evening.
Our Pledge Allegiance is verified by the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Looking online, and unmute yourself if you wish to. Not seeing any in chambers. Sir? Counselor?
Good evening.
Chair Stephenson, Planning Commission. It's good to see everybody. You know, I like to come in, once a year at least, to kind of thank you guys for the work you do, tell you how much the council appreciates. You guys take on a lot of the heavy lifting, which frees us up to do what we have to do. So it's nice to have such a professional, ethical, strong team that we have. You know, you guys keep Troutdale kind of the oasis that it's become. And, you know, I think we stand out in East County, and Troutdale's just a good place to live, and raise a family, and work. And, you know, economically, we're doing pretty well. Plan Commission should be proud of the fact that you have written our own master plan and our own development code. A lot of cities hire consultants to do that, or they have the state do it. And I think by having you guys do it, people that live here in the community, you have just a much better feel for our town, and it shows. And I very seldom if ever disagree with the decisions you guys come up with. I've watched this team effectively regulate marijuana in our city. That was a big one with a lot of pressure. You voted down the Halsey Corridor Plan and creating our own, which is better suited to Troutdale. Despite pressure from the state, you have found a way to make things better for Troutdale. And examples are, you know, the pressure about CFAC and Hellsville 2001, which eliminated single-family housing. We're one of the only states that's ever done that. So, you know, this is not, not easy stuff. And, let's see. Oh, here it is. This page got torn out accidentally. Pressure from the state. And, oh, and the last thing I wanted to say is that you guys have, I believe, a perfect record with Luba. We have not lost a case. So that says a lot about, you know, your, how ethical you guys are. And that's costly to lose a case to Luba. But, you know, it gives us a good reputation, and you guys are doing excellent work. So I just wanted to, you know, you guys have kind of a thankless job. And for a lot of people, this is a boring subject. Not as bad as budget, but close. But I enjoyed it. And I feel like you have to know, you have to know what the city's doing and what they're planning to be, to be a good counselor. So I do eavesdrop on your meetings, and I know Sandy does too. And I just want to again thank you guys for all that you do. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. Okay. Next order of business is review and approval of minutes from June 12. And I think you received a copy of those. And are there any corrections? Mr. Wilcox?
We're here.
Sorry, Commissioner Wilcox.
I have a few, actually.
Okay.
Okay, page four, very bottom paragraph. Third line down. Crowe, "As the crow flies from a frequent transfer post route." It should say transit post route. T-R-A-N-S-I-T.
Which paragraph is that?
Very bottom, second line from the bottom.
That's fine. Yep. Yep.
Got that one? Okay. Next page. Second paragraph. Third line that starts with, "Employer no longer exists in Troutdale, which has brought the number of employees down to 16." Employees should be employers.
Okay.
And then, let's see. Just keep going. We'll get to the next one. Out of 16 employers, the city has heard back from four as of this date. Out of those who responded, only one business indicated that they were an employee. It's just, just wording of that phrasing.
Maybe that they had?
Yes, they had one employee who rode transit daily.
Right, right.
Replace "were" with "had."
Had.
Yeah, yeah.
And then add one, the number.
Right. Okay, covers that one. Page six, third line, it says, "Feedback on the survey" from the community development booth. I'm not sure what's that, what that's talking about.
Feedback on the survey from?
Oh, I think I just need Ms. Palmer in front, provided feedback on the survey from the community development booth.
Because they did a survey at the booth that they had, right?
Yep.
Okay. So maybe add that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, and, let's see, farther down, the line that starts, let's see. Old City Hall building, Home Forward, will break ground in a couple of weeks. The Home Forward building will have roughly 86 tenant parking spaces. I checked the recording on this, and the transcription is accurate. Erica said, I think the exact quote was 85 or 86. But actually, I looked up the agreement the council made with Home Forward.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Yes.
Excuse me, this is Kevin. I have my volume turned all the way up on my laptop, and I am really struggling to hear Paul.
Okay.
Can you just crank up the volume on those microphones, please?
We'll do better than that.
I'll move it closer.
We'll attach it to him here.
Thanks, thanks for the, check in, Kevin.
Is that better?
Yes, that is better. Thank you.
Great.
I appreciate that, because I have the same problem when I'm at your end. Oh, let's see, lost my place now.
We're discussing roughly 86 tenants.
Okay, yeah, I got the, the agreement that council made at their 7/11/23 meeting with Home Forward. They kind of bypassed the Planning Commission and made a deal, deal around us. But, I mean, there might be 85 tenant spaces. I don't know whether you're referring to assigned spaces or total spaces. But there are a lot more than 85 available spaces. It's actually,
These are more like 86?
It's actually 106.
I believe it's 86 units. Yeah. Eight, 86 residential units.
Okay, so you're not, you're not talking about parking spaces at all? Okay. Well, in case anybody that is interested, the actual parking space figures are available at, if you look up that 7/11/23 agreement the council made with Home Forward. So I have.
Okay. I have one on page two. Chair Stephenson stated, "Review the RV decision, and in the 1996 decision, the bike parking was for employees." I don't think that's what I said. But, Paul, you're a wiser man than I am, because I could not find the recording on the website.
It's there. I listened to it.
I, I listened to it, but I don't remember. I wasn't looking for that.
I didn't see it today.
What, what made you want?
Uh, two.
Each two.
Second paragraph from the bottom. Because we have the 1996 decision, then we had a decision in, I believe it was 2018. And my comment, um, wasn't about the decision. It was just that, in general, bike parking must be for employees. Because I think my comment was, would someone ride a bike down to buy a car?
We can change that to read, stated that the bike parking is for employees.
Okay. And that we reviewed the 1996 decision and the RV decision of 2018.
Mm-hmm. Okay, perfect.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes?
I, it's pretty clear that, when I read through the notes, that it's paraphrased of that recording. So hopefully we do still keep the recordings around.
Yes, we, we do. We do.
No particulars.
But, you know, these have to be not, more than a meeting summary.
Yeah. Have to be essence correct, right?
Right.
Correct the intent.
Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay. Motion to approve?
This is Commissioner Andrews. I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the June 12, 2024 Planning Commission meeting as amended.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I think I might have got over my skis here a little bit. I think we need to have elections, right? That's the next thing. Yeah. Okay. And so with this being the first meeting in July, we will be electing officers for this year for the Planning Commission. And at this time, I would like to open the nominations for Planning Commission Chair for 2024-25.
I'd like to nominate Kenny Stephenson.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any, any other nominations for chair? Okay. Nominations for vice chair? Okay.
Nominate Shirley Priggett.
Okay.
I'll second.
Nomination for Shirley Priggett. Seconded. Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. And so this time I take a motion to close nomination?
Motion to close nominations?
Second.
All those, are all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, and now we have to vote on those two. All in favor of Kenny Stephenson for chair? Because you're glad it's a punishment. I think we can just do a voice vote on that. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, that passes. All those in favor of Shirley Priggett for vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Abstained? No, that passes? All right. Next order of business is, we need a Planning Commission member to serve on TCAP. And that had been Ms. Priggett. And she actually was going to apply, then couldn't apply because she's appointed for that position. But that would come from this body. And I don't know if there's someone else that's interested in serving. Some of us are already serving on that. And, um,
Nominate Shirley.
Okay.
For that position.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Paul.
Okay. And so we need a second on those.
I second it.
Okay. All right.
I would decline. I don't need another meeting.
Fair enough.
You don't need another meeting. You go to almost all.
Yeah, but I don't have to.
That's true. Okay. Paul is withdrawing his, right? We'll just call it that you're withdrawing.
If you need a second, Shirley.
Okay. And so we have a second for Shirley. And anyone else? Nomination for TCAP, appointment from the Planning Commission? No. Okay, we have yours.
Our cap.
I'm on committee's now.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to close the nomination for TCAP?
So Zach, I motion to close the nomination for TCAP.
Second?
All in favor? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Okay, all those in favor of Shirley Priggett to be the Planning Commission representative on TCAP?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, that carries. Okay. Is there anything else we need? Is that it?
That's it?
Perfect.
No other representatives out there. All right. Okay, and tonight we have case file LU 0012-2024, which is a variance for 1557 Right Place.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
So I have no financial relationship here, ever. I did want to make it known that my wife has worked in the care and behavioral industry for the past majority of her adult life.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll give to you. Okay, you're ahead. Okay. Before we begin the hearing for tonight's agenda item, I'd like to explain a little about the Planning Commission and the procedure we'll be following for tonight's public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Planning Commission hearings are held in coordinates of Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by opponents, then by opponents, then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request, excuse me. Any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period that the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And the criteria that we'll be working from tonight for this application will be Chapter 1, Chapter 2, Section 3, of Section 3 of Chapter 3, Chapter 5, Section 5, and Chapter 6.1. And those will be our criteria for this evening. And before I open the public hearing, does anyone have any bias, conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or anything other than driving by the site? You had a comment, Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I have no financial relationship, but my wife has worked in the care and behavioral industry for the past majority of her adult career.
Okay. All right, any challenge? Okay. Anyone else? Conflict of interest? Biased, anything? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Minkoff, seeing none? Nothing to declare, sir?
Nothing to declare.
All right. And do we have testimony cards this evening?
Yeah, we have, sir.
Yes.
And so if you plan to testify this evening, would you please fill out one of these? And we will call you up at the time to testify. And when you come up, please speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record, so that we have, we have a record and you have appeal rights, and so that this is all being captured for the recording and for television. Okay. And with that, we will open the public hearing for case file LU 0012-2024, Right Place variance. And I believe that you are up, sir?
All right. Good evening, Commission. I have a presentation for you for LU 0012, 2024, 1557 Southwest Right Place. That is a type 3 variance. So some site background, the applicant is Asma Ma Misakir. Is that accurate? Right on. Subject property is 1557 Southwest Right Place. The zone is LDR 2, Low Density Residential. There are no overlays. It's surrounded to the north, east, and south by residential uses. And to the west, there are medical clinics that are zoned HDR, High Density Residential. So the applicant's proposal, the applicant is seeking retroactive variance approval to deviate 50% over the maximum allowed fence height within the front setback at the subject property. The fence has been placed along the entirety of the applicant's front property line. It extends along a brief segment of the side property lines before connecting with the previously existing fence. There is a gate where the property line intersects the driveway to allow for access to the property. The fence is composed of black chain link fence with black slats, and is approximately six feet in height. Their permitted height per, the Development Code is four feet, and the required setback in this zone is 20 feet. So here's the house before having the fence. And here's what it looks like currently. So that, the black fence in the front, right by the sidewalk, is what the variance approval is for. Here's a site plan. It's a little difficult to read the measurements given, but the takeaway should be the fence is on the front property lines and extends a little bit along the side property line. I'm going to front-load you with some information before we get to the variance criteria, so you guys are all prepared for when we hit that section. The applicant submitted these two documents with their submission. The first one is demonstrating the hardship for a variance. So we received a letter by a Courtney Slater. She's a licensed professional counselor. The document states, "Purpose: Adding additional environmental supports." Jesse has an extensive history of leaving supervised settings. This puts Jesse and others at risk. The environmental support suggestion is that Jesse lives in a home with a six-foot or higher fence around the property to help protect Jesse and others. And the document to the right is a copy of their license by the Oregon Department of Health Services. And this is their, what allows them to operate as a residential facility. So we'll do some brief code background around fences. So Section 5.050. Number one, the clear vision standards of Section 5.040 of this code shall comply. The fence shall not exceed four feet in height if located in a required front yard setback. Except the height limit shall be six feet if you front a major arterial, so that's not the case. So four feet in height if in a required front setback. Number three, not exceed seven feet in height if located in a required side or rear yard setback. We're not worried about that section. And number four, fences and retaining walls shall be constructed of wood, brick, masonry, cement, chain link, plastic, wrought iron, or similar residential-type materials. So here's just a visualization, if you're new to hearing the fence code. Anything in this shaded dark green, that'd be the front setback. Our code says that has to be four feet. So that's the section where the applicant is asking for six feet in height. Is it all clear with everybody? And the next piece of code we have to go over is the clear vision area. So there's two. So there's two main segments that we're going to focus on. So Section B 2, driveways and alleys intersecting with local public streets shall have and maintain a clear vision triangle with its base measured along the face of curb parallel to the public wave for 110 feet in both directions from the center of the driveway and the other sides extending toward the apex of the triangle in the center of the driveway 15 feet from the street curb line. Where no curb exists, the edge of the street pavement shall be used in lieu of a curb line. I have a visualization that explains what that's saying, just coming up. And Section C, except as provided below, within clear vision areas, no vehicle, fence, wall, hedge, or other planting or structure shall be parked, erected, planted, placed, located, or maintained above three feet in height measured from the top of the curb or where no curb exists from the established street center line grade of the intersecting streets and from the driveway center line at a driveway intersection, except for occasional tree trucks, trunks, mailboxes, street signposts, utility poles, et cetera. So there's a three feet height limit within the clear vision area is what Section C is getting at. So visualized, this triangle, anything inside it is showing a clear vision area. So our code is saying you cannot obstruct this section if something's in there. So where the proposed six-foot fence is, the existing six-foot fence is within clearly this section of the clear vision area.
Question for staff?
Yeah.
What is the measured distance to the apex of the triangle there in our picture?
So that's 15 feet.
That is 15 feet.
Yeah, so 15 feet from the street curb line, measured from the middle of the driveway towards the house. And then it's 110 feet from the middle of the driveway outwards on both sides. Thank you.
Would you, would you please relate this diagram, this photo, to two slides earlier where you showed a schematic of the house and where the, the seven-foot fence line, right there, the seven-foot fence line can go all the way around up to the, see, I'm looking at the brown, the dark brown line. Can a six-foot fence be, go from the side yards up to the front of the house, but the front yard, the green area, must be four feet?
Correct.
So how does that relate to the triangle?
So the front yard is larger than the clear vision area. So look at this dark green section, right? So that's 20 feet from the front property line. Front property line going 20 feet back. So that's the entire front setback. That's going to be four feet in height. Now, going from the street curb line, 15 feet from the street curb line, that's our vertex. So this is a much smaller area that's tacked on within the front required setback, but it's not the entirety of the front setback. So it's a small section.
So it looks like six feet could run along the sides of the front yard all the way up to the sidewalk?
No, that would be within the front setbacks.
Right.
It doesn't look that way, the way it's drawn, the yellow lines.
That's the clear vision area. So looking at this, anything in the dark green would be within the front setback. Anything in the green section cannot exceed four feet by the Development Code.
Okay.
All right, and then in addition, anything within this triangle would be, not permitted to be three feet in height or over three feet in height. So a very small section of the front setback, if that's clear.
Yes, thank you.
All right, everyone okay if we go to next slide? All right, so what is being asked of the planning commission? A variance decision for the fence height in the front setback of 1557 Southwest Right Place. What is not being requested is a zoning change or a determination on the use of a residential facility. So applicable criteria, we essentially went over this, Chapter 1, Chapter 2, Section 3.113, Section 5.040, clear vision area, Section 5.050, fences, Chapter 6, 1325, Type 3 variance, and Chapter 17, general provisions. So this is a Type 3 quasi judicial procedure. The public hearing, planning commission is a decision making entity. If there is an appeal, this will go to city council. The timeline of this application, May 16th, the applicant submitted application materials. May 30th, the application was deemed complete. June 7th, notice of public hearing was sent out to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property and also to review agencies that received the notice as well. And today, on the 10th, the public hearing. If approved, the applicant's fence will have approval to stay up. So here's the agencies we reached out for comments, City Troutdale Planning, Public Works and Building, and Gresham Fire and Emergency Services. And during our comment period, we received two public comments as well. Summary of agency comments, we got no comment from every agency besides planning, obviously. And we'll go over the public comments right now. So, public comment number one was submitted by Hong An Nguyen on June 19th, 2024. Here is a summary of the comment we received. The submitted comment includes concerns of the height and color of the fence not being consistent with the character of the neighborhood and includes worries about 1557 Southwest Right Place being a residential facility. Notably, the concerns related to the use of residential facility are tied to a client's behavior who resides at the subject property. This public comment also notes how the gate to the driveway is rarely closed. In closing, Nguyen states, "We just want this fence built in compliance with current zoning requirements." So Hong An was the one who submitted the comment, but six other residents also signed this letter. So if you look in the staff report, you can see the full, the full comment in its entirety along with the six other residents who signed. For our purposes, I did not include them in this presentation. Staff response to the comments, the colored materials at the applicant's fence are permitted per TBC 5.050A4. That's the fence code we just briefed over. In addition, the use of a residential facility is an outright permitted use within the LDR 2 zone. The applicant has provided their 24-hour residential facility license from the Oregon Department of Human Services as part of their surmittal. So the use is permitted, is what I'm getting at there. Public comment number two, Rhonda Judge, June 21st, 2024. This comment expresses concurrence with public comment number one. In addition, they brought up a black pole that's installed in the curb in front of 1557 Southwest Right Place. I believe they thought the pole was the doing of the applicant. However, as a response, if you use Google Maps, you can go on their archived street view. I went back as far as I could in 2007, the pole's there. So that wasn't the doing of the applicant, that's been there for quite a while. And decision criteria. Criteria A, special circumstance or conditions, including but not limited to lot size, lot shape, topography, or size or shape of building, apply to the property, development, or to the intended use, and are not typical of the general conditions in the surrounding area. Finding, the applicant has indicated that 1557 Southwest Right Place is a residential facility that retains a client. His behavior includes ringing out the traffic and injuring himself and others. The client has been diagnosed on the autism spectrum and is unaware of traffic and environmental danger. A letter has been provided by a licensed professional counselor, Courtney Slater, recommending that the client live in a home surrounded by a six-foot or higher fence. The applicant has indicated that the distance from the driveway to the sidewalk is short and that the client may hurt themselves or others due to reasons related to their diagnosis. This particular situation is not typical of the neighborhood and can be aptly characterized as a special circumstance. As such, this criteria is met. Criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Finding, approving the fence within the front setback to be six feet in height may be injurious to the nearby property owners because the fence is currently within the clear vision triangle. The clear vision triangle is intended to maintain safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobiles traveling by the property or accessing the property. By installing a six-foot fence up at the sidewalk, it becomes difficult for not only pets, bicyclists, and motorists to determine if a vehicle is leaving the driveway, but is also dangerous for any individual leaving the subject property due to the lack of vision that the fence creates. It is therefore recommended that the applicant move the fence back 15 feet from the street curb line to ensure compliance with the City of Troutdale's clear vision standards. B continued, the applicant argues that increasing the height of the fence within the front setback will ensure the safety of the neighborhood by keeping the fence, the above referenced client, contained. Moving the fence out of the clear vision area will still allow for the fence to secure the property per the professional counselor's recommendation with the additional boon of increasing visibility and safety for all who pass by or utilize the driveway of 1557 Southwest Right Place. As such, this criteria could be conditionally met. Criteria C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision for much of variance is sought. Finding, the general purpose of a fence is to enclose and provide privacy. If the variance is authorized, the general purpose and intent of the fence can still be achieved. As such, this criteria is met. And D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. Finding, increasing the fence height and the required front setback from four feet to six feet is the minimum necessary avenue for relief from the provisions of this code. Per Courtney Slater's recommendation, a six-foot fence is required to enclose the house for not only the client's safety, but for those nearby as well. No other remedy or relief from the code's provisions offers simple and straightforward of a solution to the special circumstance outlined in Criteria A for the variance that is currently being sought. As such, this criteria is met. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with conditions as outlined in the findings of fact and the following conditions of approval. Condition 1, applicant shall be required to satisfy the comments made by review entities including in the corresponding staff report or shall work with the staff to reach an agreement between the parties. The approval of case file LU 0012-2024 shall expire automatically two years from the effective date of the decision unless the approval is enacted either through construction, establishment of use, or regurgitation of platte or survey within the specified time period. The effective date of the decision shall be the date of the notice of decision unless such decision is appealed. Condition 3, the applicant shall relocate the fence to be 15 feet from the street curb line to maintain the clear vision area and ensure compliance with Troutdale Development Code, Section 5.050. That's it.
Okay, questions for staff?
I do want, I do want to make a note for the commission that within the staff reports and the findings of fact, the final order, where it says deviate 33%, that should be 50%.
So I've corrected it since then, but Teddy pointed out, we've been using 33. Did some planner math, I was using six as a total instead of four. So apologies for that.
Commissioner Allen?
All right. So I believe that the fencing code has been in place longer than this development. And I also believe that the existing fence that was there before the chain link was added is already over high, right?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes, the, the black fence?
Yeah.
Correct.
The par fence before the chain link.
To clarify, Commissioner Allen, you're referring to the wooden fence that's pictured in this picture, not the black fence, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, yes. Yeah, the, the wooden fence that's along the side property line within the front. Yeah, that would be.
Other compliance as well.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So when I was reading through this, my, my primary concern was the slats in the fence. And, and the reason for my, I was concerned about that is if this person, I think it's probably established that they're a flat risk, right? Runs out and the, and the, and the gate on the driveway is open, nobody's going to see him until they're already past the, they're already at the sidewalk. They're not going to be seen. So that kind of creates a safety concern as well, right? So that's, I have a little concern about the, the visibility of it being opaque. Not necessarily if it was chain link, but just being opaque creates this visibility problem. So I wanted to bring that up and I wanted to get the commission's thoughts on, if they have any thoughts on that. That's it.
We'll just table that one until we get into
Staff discussion, order of operations.
All right. These are just questions for staff at this point, but good one. Do you have any others for staff?
No, that's it.
Commissioner Minkoff?
I'll have one for, for now.
I have a question, I don't know, I'm still having trouble hearing people. May I jump in?
Well, I'm, I'll get to you in just a second, okay?
Okay.
The yellow triangle you have on the diagram, does that figure 5.04OB? Because I couldn't find that in the code.
Yeah, 5.040. So if that's true.
I've got that in front of me, I'm looking at 04OB. And then at the bottom it says, see figure 5.04OB.
Oh, are you asking if this image is that? Oh, no, I, I made this for our purposes.
Does that even exist? Because I couldn't find it.
It's, I think it's in the old code and not our current code. So I believe there's a discrepancy when we edited, we passed fine and then edited a few amendments, that's somehow lost.
See, my other question is, when and how do staff become aware of the existence of this fence?
So we got a call from a concerned neighbor, essentially as a complaint. And so these issues, we as staff, for example, if we're driving around and see something that we know isn't a code, we're not necessarily allowed to act on it. However, if a resident or neighbor calls in and issues a complaint, then we would have our code compliance act and come out to the site and talk. So that's what started this. A neighbor complained about the fence. We had J R, code compliance officer, go out there. And then the applicant came in and was saying, hey, we have a pretty unique situation here. What avenues can we go about? And so we've gone, been doing this variance application.
Okay, because I think I read from one of the neighbors before that it was installed in May and they applied for the variance in May. So I was curious about the time they did that.
Yeah, I know the fence was, I believe the fence was up before the variance was applied for.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Minkoff?
Thank you. What is this property? This, this is, it says, it's in a residential neighborhood, it is, but it is being called a residential facility. So I'm assuming it's like a care home?
Yes.
That's correct.
Permitted care home, okay. I would suggest that the proprietor of this care home not allow his resident, I would suggest that the proprietor of this care home not allow his resident, his violent resident into the front yard. There is plenty of backyard space. You can have seven-foot fences all around, from the side of the house, all the way around the back. And that is sufficient, there's plenty of space behind this house from the picture that I'm looking at, for his residents, violent or otherwise, to have outdoor space. And that the front yard, if this particular individual is a violent individual, that he not be permitted into the front yard. Or the proprietor be ticketed or penalized for having done so. I don't think we should go around putting up six-foot fences all around all the different homes in residential neighborhoods where there are care facilities being operated. I think, I think the, according to the complaints, I agree with wholeheartedly, it looks awful. It looks like it's a commercial building, not a residential property. And I would vote absolutely not to approve this.
Commissioner Makeoff, these are allowed by state law.
Not six feet.
No, the fence is, but as far as the care facility, the individuals that are there, we don't have any, any say or control over that at all.
I understand that, but a six-foot fence of that particular material, I'm saying the material, if you go back to another later slide, it says the material and color is approved by, by Troutdale regulation, but the height is not.
And that's all, that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about the individuals that are there, we're just talking about the fence itself.
Right. And all I'm trying to suggest is, I don't want to see all the other care facilities in residential neighborhoods start requesting six-foot fences around the front of their
Point, point taken.
Oh, I was just going to get back to the order of operations because I think we were just for staff questions.
Okay, and I had two. On your second slide, I think. If it's approved, go to that one. The first one, there you go. If approved, the fence would stay up?
With condition of approval, sorry.
Right.
That's not on there, but yeah.
Yeah, but the fence would get moved, so it would probably come down before it would stay up?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so it would stay up, but the condition of approval states that the fence would then be moved back fifteen feet.
So there's still the fence with a six-foot height in the front setback, it's just pushed back a little more. So the fence they built, as is, would not be staying up, but the fence would stay up?
It would stay up, but not in the location.
Correct.
Correct.
It would stay up, pending the approval, the condition of approval.
Certainly not staying up because it's moving.
It's moving and then it would be constructed again in another location to meet the vision clearance setback.
The reason for the word would be if it's denied, the fence would not stay up. So approval would mean the fence would stay up. Apologies for the lack of clarification.
It would stay up after coming down.
Be relocated.
Rellocated, yeah. I, I guess I think either way, the fence is coming down. It's either going to be taken down or reconstructed or taken down.
I agree with that.
First statement.
Then the other thing, in your narrative, you mentioned Wright Place is an arterial?
Oh, it is not.
I would say it's a collector vest.
Yeah, so I was saying the last tidbit of that code section I was reading.
Well, you refer to it as a collector or an arterial.
I actually haven't referred to the street type at all. However, where that was brought up in Section 510502, there is a section that says, except the height limit shall be six feet for a dwelling that existed prior to June ninth, nineteen eighty-seven, which fronts a major artery. So I was saying that section does not apply, it does not front a major artery. So two, the first sentence in A two, where it says not exceed four feet in height located in a required front yard setback, that is the only section that applies. And so I read the rest of the section to say that second sentence, second clause of that section does not apply.
Any other questions for staff?
I do have one additional question.
Commissioner, please.
With the expiration set expiring automatically two years, is there any leeway or cause to change that when it comes to, granted, we're not changing any zoning type, but conditional use of the property? Would that automatically, meaning, it looked like, like, for example, the license of the facility was due up next October twenty twenty-five. So if for whatever reason things were not renewed, would it be subject then, or just automatically blanket two years no matter what?
So the two years, that's, so this is kind of unique in the sense that it's a retroactive approval, they've already built the fence.
Right.
Traditionally, the fence would not be built yet. And then that condition would say, once you get approval with this variance, now you have two years to actually act on it. After two years, you don't longer have permission to build this fence.
But it's already built.
So it's saying, you can't wait forever once you get approval, but it's already up.
Got it.
It's just one of those canned language items.
Got it. Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Got one question. Commissioner.
So does that mean that they have two years to move it?
I was going to address that for your conditions. Oh. Perfect, if you, if you would like.
Commissioner Allen?
So one question. It didn't look like fire had a response.
Correct.
Right? Did they respond that they didn't have anything, any issues, or did they just not respond at all?
No response. So typically, it's pretty common if an agency doesn't have a comment where they just won't respond at all. That's, that's not unusual.
All right.
I do have one additional question.
Yes.
Is the, is the house number visible at this time from the street for emergency services?
I'd make a difference if the gate opened or not.
Yeah, it's, would I be right in saying it looks like it's maybe, I guess it's tough to see if you're guys are able or not?
Yeah, sort of the gate closed, it's visible.
With the gate closed, I don't believe it is visible.
Anything else for staff? All right. If there's nothing else, at this time, I'd like the applicant to come forward, please.
Can we come to data?
Yeah.
I'm going to run it.
Okay, good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Okay. Good evening, my name is Asma Ammasakir. Thank you for the team and I appreciate for you guys and then discussing this one. I'm working for this group home in Lydia Care. And this client, I'm not doing it purposely because he is an ICP team, it is a requirement because he is very highly aggressive, run away in a car. And so we recommend his behavioral specialists and his, her's advocated, he have a lot of item, you know? So what's best to recommend him and for safety for himself or other neighborhoods, any, you know, people is driving any car because he's starting and any cars, he's just jumping. So what is the best to recommend is I told for us and in six feet, he cannot and with the gate and then lock. So that's we are purposely doing. And otherwise, I don't even need it for, built it for the, you know, the fences because more clear view. And the reason the color we did it, that because he is more attention and distraction and because other cars going and seem like starting, so that's why we did in a black color for the, you know, because more close view, not close to view. Otherwise, so I recommend until the client is his safety and I know that for, they're allowed for regulation before we pass it because there isn't a high safety others for him, or that's why we did. And I really appreciate it for until he leaving for, you know, the fences stay this way and because of his whole safety. And he have right live in the house because we are community supported. And so this is client, it is he have to, you know, because not only residential area, but he have a north HO and because he have anyone, we have to suffer and help him. So anyone in the team, I really appreciate it, this one, it is the app, make me help for approve him, these fences and until he leaving. Otherwise, there is, you know, the business is not moving, live over there, we can't take off, we don't need even the fences.
Yeah, and I would like to add some additional.
Name and address for the record, please.
I will, my name is Masfen Woldomuska and I live in one, two, six, nine, two, southeast, Regency View Street, Happy Valley, Oregon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to add something, what my brother said, he's my brother. And he, he mentioned it all. And it's all about the safety of the, I don't want to call him client, brother. He's our brother, just like you. You have a brother somewhere. You have sister somewhere, a client like that. So the point is, yes, we understand. This client, our brother, recommended his behavioral things from ICP, Individual Support Plan, from Care Plan, from the state regard. And he is highly behavioral. The state knows, the county knows. And this, our brother, he had the right to move the front yard, the backyard, wherever the, he go, just like any regular American citizen. We are here to help him. That's his home. Our agreement, I believe the state, the federal, the city, you guys knows, this thing is going to knock individual house. Not today, tomorrow, our grandkids, you will see, we will see. We don't want things to happen. It just happened. Our point is, we are here to take care of our brothers. The safety recommended, we are doing, we are not doing this in purpose to make our neighbors mad or not happy. We are here, we did this one, only the safety of the client, the citizen.
Do you, do you have a response to the statement that with the slats in the fence, it's difficult to see an individual if they came running out? If you were in a motor vehicle, you could probably hit them before you could even see them.
Yeah, actually, the fence, we put it, the fence right on the property, the front yard property. And we give the client, not only, we are not talking only one brother, we do have two, three. That when they come out, we do have the gate, slide gate, it's already sec, always secure. And always when the client out of the house, they're al- always surrounded or supported by the caregiver. That's the, the states because of behavioral. I, I heard earlier, he mentioned, one of our brother, he mentioned, his wife, she's doing like that. And maybe you heard about it. So that's our safety. It's the safety of, it's not only the safety of the client, it's the safety of the public too. We don't want him to run.
That was, that was kind of where I was going was, if you've got slats in the fence and an individual comes out through an open gate, let's say, he would probably be into the lane of traffic before anyone could do anything about it.
I can answer that one. So because the reason he is, he has not behavioral escalation, he have to, we have to taken for in a car, in a garage, we have our vans every time within a car garage. And so we have, even set belt lock, even a community, we cannot driving without set belt locks. So he can't jump any cars, his behavior, and so that's we drive around every time we have to set belt lock. I have the key and what we do, that is for approval. He cannot even lock him things because his behavior is high escalation. And I heard about the one is for our teams, you know, side, on the backside. That's, we can't do that, recommend this is normal person, whoa, please play for on the backside, no go on the front. We cannot do that, this guy. So this our brothers, we just, everything is behavior issue and it seem like he need any cars, he don't have any danger recognized. That's why with our worryness, it seem like, otherwise, it is, we try the best, this is more cares before something happen, that is more helping for the fences, you know?
I have a comment for the speakers?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Makeoff.
Thank you. I appreciate, really, honestly, that you are taking care of your brother. I think that's wonderful, it's commendable. We should all be doing a little bit more of that, caring for our brothers. I know that he, he, as an American citizen, as all American citizens, are allowed to go in their front, front, uh, front yards, in their backyards, and have that freedom. But you forfeit that freedom when you are violent to others, maybe even violent to yourself. So all I'm saying is that your brother forfeits his right to use the front yard if he is throwing rocks at cars or causing damage to other individuals.
Can I answer this one? And because the reason is jumping forfeit, he can't jumping for his help because he can't, he's heightened for, he can't do that, that's why we didn't happen for his fences. And so he's not run away in a rock and, you know, throw ways of do this guy, that's the reason, because he's pushing and scratching kind of behavior he have, but he cannot, he don't have a, throws a rock, doing that purpose.
Yeah, and also I would like to add one thing, you know, we really appreciate your comment, but I would like to add, our brother, he's not doing it that in purpose to be violent because he, we consider it, he is sick. He doesn't know what he is doing. So we are there to help him, not to harm anybody.
Okay. I, I need to just be real clear about this. We're looking at criteria in the development code only. We're not talking about this individual as our brother. We're, we're not talking about the characteristics of the home, we're talking about the fence and does it meet the criteria of the development code? And how do we address this to the best interest of the community? Okay, so we need to stay in that vein, please.
Yeah, we, we, we did the fence a little bit farther to the right of property because the reason why we did that one, to get leverage to see him, to hold him before it's happening on the street. So now I'll be concerning, if we move the fence toward to the, the house, fifteen feet, he just, just out the house, just jumping. So at least if we got that much space, we will, because of the behavior aggressiveness, at least the caregiver, they can hold him, they can control. But immediately, if it is just like in front of the entrance door, as soon as he got out, just out. We will not get the privilege to control it. So we would like you to consider at least the, the way we put it with considering of if in case aggressively out, how we going handle it? We will get time to hold it, that's what we considered. But you guys are, you know, the code, everything, we would like. You guys are, you know, the code, everything's, we would like you to consider these things too. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Um, I see one coming.
My understanding is that. The gate is only closed when he's outside in front, is that correct?
No, inside we can't close it and it seem like we have, he have a man killer, man gates we have. And we have in the car gates too.
I've, I've been past the house a couple times and I've never seen the gate closed.
Oh, it's closed, it will be closed, yeah, because if it is. The clients, yeah, the clients, we going out, usually, most of the time is almost, another daytime, we have to drive in. His car, you know, we, he's in a van and we drive out, we not close at the gates. Most of the time, his hobbies is for living for in a car, just drive around. At least we can drive six hours, four hours. In a minimum a day. We have to do it, drive around the city. So he is not, because he's not, he don't like sometime, most of the time, he don't like the homestay. Yeah, so if the gate is open, that means the client is not home.
He's not at home.
Yeah.
Okay.
He, he like to drive and see the nature, so.
Yeah.
We usually put it into the van, drive around him to relax, calm down. He does, the client, one of the pay, the behavior, he doesn't want to stay in one spot for a long time.
Yeah, so if he is, he's drive around, he's tired, he just getting for the food. We just bring even the timing, specific time, daytime. Usually, if he's not sleeping, we medication time, order food time, order bathroom time. Otherwise, he need going out. And seem like that time, we have to get in the closet. And so I'm like, what we doing? And so what we doing right now, we want to be lucky, even I got his, my licenser. They have an I buy, we have to be lock key. So we have to be making I B L two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, Commissioner Makeup?
I have no other questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I believe that those two, anyone else wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Okay, anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? I'll start with, uh, Mr. Jim Jones.
Noted, my name is Jim Jones, one, four, nine, five, Southeast, or Southwest Wright Place, thank you folks for being here. Um, I do have a background in construction over forty years and twenty-five years with the neighboring jurisdiction. And dealt with situations like this hundreds of times where there's been action taken and results. Asking for forgiveness or variances, whatever, so. It's not that we're in opposition to the facility and the type of care that. That they're going to provide, I mean, that's something that livability is important to all of our citizens. But it's actually the aesthetics. And they say that the, uh, your proven, your approval of the type of material is being used, but that's under the conditions of. An approved scenario, four foot or three foot or whatever. Now that we have a six foot fence and it's chain link. With the black slats in it, it kind of, as one of the members here mentioned, it kind of looks like a. Commercial building or maybe a facility that's in the wrong location. It kind of sends a different message, what's behind that fence? What's going to come charging out or what kind of activities are going on? Is unbecoming in our neighborhood. So in my experience, typically what, well, I mean, there's a lot of adult foster cares around town with fences and larger fences in front. And they have some aesthetic value to them. And whether it be brick facade or wrought iron or something that's appealing to where you walk by or you drive by. You look and you recognize as, wow, that's, that's kind of a nice place. So. My suggestion is, is maybe if we're, as a neighborhood, we want to give. Some leeway towards, you know, variance or alternation, alternate method of the code or the titles or whatever, um. We get something back. Meaning. Something a little nice looking. And as mentioned, you're going to have to, if approved, part of the. Conditions were to move that and out of the visibility setback. So. Since the fence will be relocated, it would seem kind of feasible to maybe also change the facade or design of it. What is the purpose of a four foot fence, maximum height? Or three foot in the condition of, of the driveway? I don't know if you're more familiar with that or?
Are you asking your help?
Yes, yeah, it is question.
Um, it would be for, I guess, to enclose, um, get sort of a baseline privacy.
Right. Well, as I interpret that, it looks to me like more visibility for exiting and or. It, it just sets a precedent for, or a condition for. A particular design, four foot max, now we're not going to have a six foot, a five foot, whatever, of course, you can't go seven without a permit, but. The way I, I would see that myself. The current fence, as you mentioned, is, is only eight feet from the curb line, so it's very, I mean, it's right on the, on the property line there. Since it's been installed, I live two houses to the north, I've never seen the gate closed, not once. Day or night, so. That's just my, my note on that one, some of my neighbors have said, well, it was two o'clock in the morning or one day or whatever, but. The concern is. Another concern, as I believe, um, Commissioner Mintka. Mentioned is, once the precedence is set. Then what's to prevent these things from popping up all over the place? So. I'm just asking that, you know, the board really considers this carefully and, and think about. What if it's in your neighborhood? I mean, is this really what you're going to want to see? Again, not in opposition to having the facility. But the design. It really is unattractive.
Type three variances are handled individually based on the criteria for each application?
Correct.
So they don't really set a precedence for something else?
Well, when I say that, it's just something I can go into the city files and archives, dig that out and say, well, here's three other situations that has been approved and similarity.
Based on each case.
Right, which kind of bolsters somebody's ability to kind of push these things through. I mean, that's. But I understand you try to carefully do that on case by case basis, yeah. Yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, it's, it's really my concerns and appreciate you guys' time to take a look at this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, Kathy Jones?
Hello. You want my name?
Please.
For the record?
Yeah.
Um, Kathy Jones, address is fourteen ninety-five Southwest Wright Place, Charredale. My main concern is for safety, for the client. Or the tenant, as well as the neighbors. And the children that are playing in the neighborhood. I have, um, seen that gate closed twice since it's been up. And I also want to note that the way the fence is designed or installed. When I walk by with my dog or my grandchildren. I'm, I have to stop and look through the slats to make sure there's nobody there. Or a car isn't running, getting ready to back out. Now, I can't say that other. People in the neighborhood. Would do that, or we have kids riding their bicycles up and down that sidewalk. They, they're kids, they're not going to do that, and the person that might be coming out of that driveway cannot see. Can't see until it's too late, you're in the street and, you know, terrible thing could happen. And it's just a matter of time for something like that's going to happen with the fence the way it is. And as far as aesthetics, it. It, it is not the prettiest thing to look at in the neighborhood, I think everybody in our neighborhood tries very hard. To have an, you know, decent looking home. And it just, it looks like something suspicious is going on behind that black fence. And so, you know, I, I kind of have to say that, you know, we need to think about the, um. The safety and the, the rights for the people that also live there, as well as. The tenant that's being cared for. And I respect what they're doing, I think it's great. But there are other facilities that also take care of clients that are. Dangerous. And they have other ways of controlling them, as the other commissioner stated, just keep them it to one section of the house. Because the way it's set up now, he could come barreling out and run in the street and get hit by a car himself. They, the gate is not closed. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Anyone online wishing to testify as an opponent? Any neutral parties wishing to testify to the application? Okay, see none.
Motion to close public comment?
This is the second.
Okay, we have a motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify or say no.
Aye.
Closed, okay. All right.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I have to make one comment here, I'm going to lose internet access. I'm at Wallawa Lake in Joseph, Oregon, and they're, they're turning off. I'm, they're actually closing the facility, so I have to leave, you can register me as a no vote. Please.
All right.
Thank you, and I apologize.
No, thank you. Have a safe trip back, sir. Okay. Alright.
Hurry, ready for, do we need comment?
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right, um, back to my, what I was bringing up earlier. So. I think one of my main concerns is the visibility part, and I understand the autism and all that. But we're dealing with safety of the individual, safety of the public, right? And we're talking about, uh, clear vision. So the question comes in, if, if you have the, the chain link fence and you don't have the, and you were to remove the slats. Would that be clear enough vision that you don't actually have to move the fence away for that apex triangle?
It would still be an, an object of a certain height in the clear vision, um, so it degrees of.
So wouldn't be seen clear enough?
So that's, that's.
I think the idea behind it is just an, an object of a certain height.
You can't have a permanent object in the clear vision triangle.
So no matter what, it ends up happening, you got it that.
Apex.
Yeah.
So how much of the front yard would be maintained if the fence goes back fifteen feet from the curb?
Uh, you'd see. Probably five off the curb now, and we'd go to fifty, or we'd go to seven. For, we'd be moving it back seven, right?
For the start of the setback?
No, for the location of fence.
Got it.
Back seven from where it is.
That sounds right.
I think so. From the vision tri- from the vision clearance area, I believe so. Yes.
But we'd be back seven feet.
So assuming the house is twenty feet setback, that's, that makes it five feet from the front of the house.
Very, very, so here's a line, so right at the start of the street curb is right. Here, if you can see my mouse, and at fifteen feet. It's not the straightest line, so apologies. Um, but this is where we're proposing. To move the fence back, and if it's in this location. If it's here or behind, that would be complying with our standards for clear vision.
So still have a good ten.
Yeah.
There's, there's a ease to the roof too, so there's, from what we see in this aerial, there's a little more room.
But you're how far from the property line now?
We are. Hitting two lines at once, so we're gonna go this. Very, very roughly. Please don't use these numbers as accurate.
So you're not even seven. Feet back.
From the property line.
Right.
From where it is right now.
Yeah. So you're like four feet back from where it is now.
Roughly.
Dish. Okay.
Yeah, okay, so the applicant. By her DM right, was concerned about not having enough space. That the client could. Direct, by her, in my jump fence. And get out. But it looks to me like there's plenty of space.
Well, you're talking four foot differential.
Right.
Is really where we're at, we're talking four foot difference.
Right. So there's good ten feet.
Yeah, probably more than that.
Yeah, so there should be plenty of space.
Okay.
All right. Another question for staff. Um, I just want to clarify in the six point one, three, one, five, type one variance, where it talks about, um. Expansion or reduction of the quantified provision in this code by no more than ten percent, is that referring to any adjustments made to the actual items themselves, meaning the height of the fence? By no more than ten percent?
Uh, I'm sorry, could you, for second, are you referring?
Uh, six point one, three, one, five, type one variance, where it talks about the, uh, requests involving an expansion or reduction of a quantified position, provision in this code by no more than ten percent.
Oh, like the types of variants?
We're type three?
Yeah, so we're, we're going fifty percent, so that triggers the hearing, so. Anything fifteen percent, I believe, or lower would be an administrative decision, it would come to a.
So it'd be one or two?
One, two, five, got it, okay.
I think fifteen percent are over from the requirement, um, in the Development Code, it would trigger a hearing.
Okay, got it.
So that's why we're here today.
Okay, just double check, thank you. Um, on that note, I guess, I want to. Maybe pose the question, if, if the visibility is a concern with the slats, if it would make sense to perhaps adjust. Those visibility blockers to maintain that despite the fence being higher, meaning there would only be four feet.
Of slot?
Of slot, and the remainder being clear, but still a fence, if that's a possibility.
That's, uh, that's a call.
Yeah, the only thing I would say that would, would be an issue with that is if you're in a vehicle. You're below four feet.
Potentially, yeah, I mean, this sounds like they have a van that's with low visibility anyway, potentially.
Yeah.
Potentially, but you're still out of the vision.
Right.
Clearance area.
Right.
At that point.
Sure. And if, if they had built a four foot fence in the first place, they could still have slats. So they're not changing anything there.
Sure.
I see where you're going. It's a way of having a higher fence, but not have a higher block.
Right, exactly.
But it's still a physical structure, that twenty feet higher.
Still needs a variance.
You're gonna have to look at fence.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner?
So I wanted to expand on what Commissioner Lemey was saying. Generally, in this type of situation, you want barriers to buy yourself time. Like, there'd be a caregiver there, right? But, well, people are fast, they're slippery, it's hard, you know, you've got children, it's hard to keep up. And so you would, you'd have some kind of indicator that they're near the door, some kind of proximity indicator. You might have multiple lots. And all this is to warn you, slow them down. The fence is just the next barrier beyond that, to slow them down yet again, to give you a chance to catch them. Because some people, especially if they're young, they can move pretty fast. And so all you're trying to do is you're doing delay tactics. And that's what's going on here. What we have to decide is, you know, really, do we limit them to the four foot fence that he might be able to jump, or do we let them do the six foot fence? And if so, much to Commissioner Andrews' point of view, do we try to at least keep the visibility to where it should be? And also, I might want to mention that when fire comes, do we respond to a fire, and they don't have enough fire personnel there, that they can't go inside? You might see them actually hit a fire from the street, where they're doing the hose, and they're pointing the hose near a fire, but it's bad enough, right? If you have a solid blockage, the street may not be making it to where it is. So that's another added benefit to having the slats lower, is trying to get the stream of water in there.
Thanks for clarifying. I guess what I, what I meant earlier is, I am in agreement, in agreement that the fence does need to be moved back from a variant standpoint in order to fall under code compliance. I think in addition to that, potentially limiting the height of the slats for multiple reasons, that being one of them, when it comes to, I mean, not being able to see the number on the house if the gate is closed, which sounds like it should be on a regular basis, if that was, be the case, but also, if, if, again, you have visibility as a factor on that, if other people are walking by, they want to make sure that it's clear. Not having to try and look through a fence where that might be housing a potentially violent individual. You know, that would also maybe help negate that.
Well, if we actually did have a violent individual, there are, there are facilities available for people in that situation. Wouldn't necessarily put him amongst a residential situation, right? So I don't, I don't believe that's necessarily the case here.
It seems to be exactly the case, based on the wording of the, the, from the clients, from the clients themselves, too, yeah.
Yeah, you would get that version, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I guess to sum this up, I do think that visibility is an issue. And I'll just throw this out, we move the fence back to meet the clear vision and go back four feet and change. And they have a black chain link fence already that they could possibly utilize. And if it didn't have slats in it, it would help the visibility as far as seeing the house number. And bicyclists and travelers going by, being able to see them coming out, and then being able to see other people, like on the sidewalk. I mean, frankly, if you're in a vehicle and you're backing out, and that fence line is up against the sidewalk, I don't know how you'd see somebody walking. And the clear vision, of course, is a concern. For any other vehicle on the street. So, those are just my thoughts, and then possibly the fence coming down within, let's say, like 90 days or something. Would that be realistic, Ms. Paul?
So, can we require that they bring it down to four foot slats? Is that in our jurisdiction?
So because it's a variance, we can basically do whatever, we could say no slats, or four foot slats, or six foot slats, or whatever.
And we would have to make a finding
Right.
for that to occur, so if you look at the findings of, the findings of fact for the conditional use on page two of the findings of facts, where it states, the variance authorized will not be interest adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. So when we talk about the public welfare, we want to make sure that the fence is, has the visibility to the house number, is visible to bikes and pedestrians. We would need to crack some additional language for that finding.
Right, because it says safety, public safety concern.
Correct.
Yeah.
So language could potentially include cover, means coverings or slats no greater than four feet in height, essentially.
Yeah, basically, due to testimony received at the planning commission hearing, the planning commission finds that a safety concern is, is in place and is recommending that, the material be of X.
Yes.
And we require that they change the color of what left of slats? A black or something more? Or a tan?
Is this an HOA environment?
No.
Yeah, that was one of my first questions, but it's not. Well, of course, the other thing is, you could
I mean, you've got a black.
You could potentially do no slats.
Yeah, that's true.
If you're concerned about visibility.
But we're moving it back out of the, in the triangle.
I think that's a given, isn't it?
Yeah, you're, you're moving it back, I think visibility still could be an issue.
How much visibility do we move as a citizen into their property?
Well, the reason for the four foot fence, it's like if you're on a bicycle and you're riding by, or you're driving by, or something, you at least have, you know...
A little warning trap, if somebody's coming out or something.
As opposed to something that just totally blocks your view.
But you've moved it back five feet from the sidewalk anyways, you've got some warning.
Distance and visibility by your time, right?
Right.
The first part gives you...
So you've got a higher fence than you would normally have. I mean, even giving it back, you're still 50% higher than what a standard fence would be.
You're still reducing of the action time.
It provides some additional aesthetics that currently run with neighborhoods of having lower fences and higher visibility to the sidewalk and streets.
Right.
So stop, isn't that, aren't, aren't, aren't aren't there two distinct issues here? There's the clear vision area. So under that guidance, they can keep the six feet and just move it 15 feet off the curb. But then there's the other element, where nothing under, nothing over four feet is allowed in the front yard setback. Those are two separate requirements, right?
The variance is covering both of those.
Right, so they both have to be addressed.
Correct.
Right.
But you're addressing both of them.
Okay.
Oh, and you want to take them separately?
Well, if I had a four foot fence, I could leave it where it was, right?
Yeah.
No. Why not? Still has to be moved back.
Yeah, it's in the clear vision triangle still. So it would have to be moved back.
Why is that?
Why is that?
And, and the clear vision, and the clear vision triangle, you can, or area, the fence could be three feet.
Yeah.
And not four feet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Hence the fifth.
So there's a third element.
Yeah, so, so the fence, the fence has got to get moved either way. So what we're doing is, we're moving, in a nutshell, we would be voting to move the fence out of the vision triangle, and we would be allowing the fence to be six feet instead of four feet.
With perhaps conditions.
Right, and then any conditions that we deem, we think are necessary to accomplish that. And so I'm, understanding the slat question, I just think that slats on a six foot fence do not address, even though it's moving back four feet, do not address the visibility issue adequately.
May I ask you if you could clarify what you would like to see, because I'm very interested in what the commission's opinions are?
This is just my opinion, and based on what I'm hearing from, from the group, okay, is I would say the fence goes out of the vision triangle, and we grant the variance for the, for the six foot fence, black chain link, no slat. And I think that could be an issue for the individual that would be in the front yard, but I'm also hearing testimony that the individual in the front yard isn't really in the front yard very often.
Clarification, do we address the existing noncompliant fence at all?
No.
Or we leave that alone?
Yeah, we're, we're handling fence A.
Okay. And I think that existing fence is to out of the triangle. Would that be correct?
It's within the triangle?
I, I think it's outside of the triangle, is that correct? That six foot existing fence, the wood one on the, on the edge?
On the side yard.
On the side yard.
Yeah, it could be, but for the property right next to it, they also have a clear vision triangle. And it might be within that one, but I don't...
So we're gonna actually need that one addressed, as far as, I'll make sure that's outside the clear vision triangle of both properties.
It would be, but it's not a part of this application, so you're not addressing a part of this.
Well, was there not a complaint?
Uh, not for that section, this is for the black fence that was just installed. I believe that white fence that goes on the side is, might not actually be a part of the subject property, but might be neighboring property.
Right.
That would only come into play if some of the...
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I don't know if the complaint includes that whole thing, or just a part of it.
So that's my thoughts of that. So you're gonna need an additional finding for B?
Yes, so, what I'm hearing...
Can I write that later, or do I have to do that now?
There's, there's a couple options that we can do. What I'm hearing is, the intent is to grant the six foot fence, but have it be located outside of the vision clearance area. But the aesthetic of that fence, due to safety and visibility, is the, the next, I think, item that needs to be addressed. Is it gonna be slatted? No slats? Or are we gonna have half slats at the, at the four foot level? And, and the rest of the fence, two feet, be open and clear?
Um, because I recommended the, I brought forth the idea of the four foot, I think, I mean, the entire purpose of the slats anyway was to lower stimulus or, or what have you for the resident there. So if we're shortening it anyway, then I feel like that's kind of a moot point. And if we're just focusing on the interest of safety, then removing them entirely would probably be the way to go when it comes to clear line of sight. So I, I would say, like, in the findings, under the area that says, like, by installing a six foot fence up, up to the curb, and with, like, including slats, you know, dangerous, etc., is therefore recommended that the applicant move the fence back 15 feet and remove the slats to cover kind of both of those items, I guess would...
And still allow the six feet?
And still allow the six foot, right, that would be the only, like, findings change difference.
Sounds like we've got some kind of consensus going, and there's some other opinions.
Right.
Planning commission received testimony to the fact.
And so with that finding, then we need to change the condition of approval. So with that new finding, condition approval number three
Is gonna get changed.
Would get changed. So the applicant shall relocate the fence to 15 feet from the street, from the street curb line, to maintain the clear vision area and ensure compliance with that section. And...
Condition four would be to remove internal slats. Correct.
We, we can make that, we can make it, we can make a new condition as condition four, or we could tack it on to condition three, and just say, and remove, remove slats.
Yeah, I think that's only enforceable if they want to keep the six foot fence.
Correct.
Should they decide to go with the four foot fence, they would not enforceable.
Correct.
So do you want to tack it, or you want a new one?
We'll leave that up to the decision makers here.
I heard tack it, so it's tack it.
Okay, that's fine.
Remove slats, okay. All right. Everyone working through that, okay? All right. Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, sounds good.
Good, okay. So, what we'd like to do is, at this point, if possible, is to get a motion to accept the finding of fact and find an order, and then one for conditions of approval per case file, LU-00122024.
As modified?
Yes, as modified.
I would say as modified by the discussion.
As modified by planning commission.
This is Zach, I make a motion to accept the final order and findings of fact as modified by planning commission for LU-0012-2024, 1557, Southwest, right place.
Okay, is that work?
What am I doing about the 90 days?
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry. Another condition would be
Fence needs to be...
The illegal fence needs to be addressed within 90 days. Is that reasonable?
The, so our condition is going to be, the applicant shall address the, I want to address the code com...
Would we, would we edit condition number two, instead of saying, uh, leave this as, my computer died, so I can't read it? But I assume it says two years, would we shift that to 90 days?
No.
No.
Because the condition, the condition's good for two years, but the condition of removing the fence would be sooner than that. And we can't put the condition at 90 days of the approval of the fence. If that makes sense? Otherwise, we're saying you have two years to move the fence.
That's why I was saying we change the two years to the 90 days. Because the fences already have, we're saying, we can just add on a new condition.
Because this is saying they have two years to build the fence.
Yeah, they have two years to do it.
So what he's saying...
Does that make sense, Nick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I just gotta move that, that's my...
Okay.
Because it's already there.
Yeah, they have two years to, to build it.
But it's already built.
Under this, the new one. So in other words, we're approving the new fence, you can take the old fence down tomorrow, and you have two years before you have to put up the new fence.
Oh, so you're giving them a shorter time limit for removing the noncompliant fence?
Correct.
But giving them a longer time to put up the new one, yeah. Put up the, the new one.
Thank you.
Okay. So existing noncompliant fence to be removed within 90 day period? So existing non-compliant fence to be removed within ninety day period is condition four.
So I have the applicant shall address the existing non-compliant fence within ninety days.
Of decision.
Of the notice of decision.
Alright. Alright. You okay with that as a modification?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner McCall?
He said no.
He just said no, right?
Yeah, but he's unavailable for the vote.
Commissioner Alini?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Chair Stevenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
That one passes. Okay, and now, the conditions of approval.
This is Zach, and I motion that we accept the conditions of approval as modified by planning commission for LU dash zero zero one two dash twenty twenty four, one five five seven Southwest, right place.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval of, of, conditions of approval for case file LU dash zero zero one two two zero two four, right place, type three variance. And just for clarification, this is adding condition of approval number four. Any discussion on the motion? Nope, okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Alini?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Chair Stevenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was, I was thinking to say something, but we have a concern in eating here, the decision. Seven feet or fifteen feet in, we, we are afraid we don't get to park the driveway. So the client will be outside. When we peel it out, half of the cars will be outside of the fence. Is there any consideration we can make again, things, you know? Half of the van is gonna be outside when we move the fence and building the slide gate, half of the van is gonna be outside. And make part of the client is gonna be. It just, I don't know how, is there any modification to the, the slide?
Seems like it'd be your responsibility to try and throw in another solution, like using garage space or something, I mean, that's not up to us.
I, I don't know the distance between the apron and the, and the street.
Well, you might have to run your fence up and down the driveway, fence on the side of the driveway, the driveway push.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. If, if a little bit to get, only to get out, to cause it, uh, when we load and unload the client, we need to secure the, the slide. Because if you get it, uh, secure them, the gate, then we can unload, unload. But if the gate is here halfway, there is a possibility.
Can you do the slide instead of the string?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a sliding gate. The gate, they currently have a slide, so.
I mean, if the facility doesn't want them, just.
Dakota?
Can I move on?
And then some.
For sure.
Are you ready?
I am ready. Alright, so, and I missed last meeting for downtown, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So as we just, as we've been discussing about use tables and definitions, I have gone, and I'll share my screen, so I have not sent this out to everybody. I have gone and made track changes to our definitions, adding those definitions that we had discussed. And then also adding, making track changes to our use tables to add those couple of sections uh, that we also discussed, adding gym and then also adding, uh, a additional requirements for, uh, adult entertainment.
And we need some.
It's not, I mean, it's not, it's, it's a little different than that, I'll show you all, so maybe when we get there, that's just easiest way to say it right now. So let me pull this up and then I will share my screen. Uh, we'll start with the definitions. Uh, you'll notice they aren't, they don't look like typical track changes, and that is because, and I'll explain that in a second. Uh, and it'll become very clear.
We can hardly.
If I can get mine, there we go. Alright, so definitions page. Let's go ahead and slide it down. You'll notice typically when we do track changes, anything you're adding is underlined. However, how we, the current format of our development code is every definition is underlined. So that's why all new definitions will be underlined and highlighted. Just so we can add some clarity, uh, otherwise I don't want everybody to think that we're changing every single definition, we're not, it's only the sections. So here's the definition.
We won't have that definition, will we?
We won't.
Well, we're moving to completely?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We won't.
We. So we actually won't have a definition of adult entertainment businesses. So I had a great conversation with our city attorney, um, about entertainment in general and entertainment uses. And we can get to where the commission wants to go with this. And we're just going about it just a little bit differently. So in our existing code right now, we have, um, in our use table, we talk about major entertainment uses and minor entertainment uses. And so if Dakota's gonna scroll, scroll to it right now. And this will help you, we can just run through it. And this, and we made this change because we're trying to mitigate, of course, risk to the city, that's my job.
Thank you.
And you're very welcome. And, and mitigating that risk, but also fulfilling the intent of the commission here. And when we talk about entertainment uses, we, we all have to just classify them generally speaking. So speaking to our attorney, um, if we can add nightclub to the definition of major entertainment uses. And then at the bottom, if you scroll down, when we talked about kind of time, place, and manner.
Let's say nightclub.
And we don't have to define nightclubs. Because if you look it up in the Webster's dictionary, and we always turn to the Webster's dictionary, if, if somebody comes in and says, hey, we want an interpretation, that's the first, that's the first place we look, is, is the dictionary. Um, and the dictionary, when you read the definition of nightclub in the dictionary, it talks about, um, floor performances. And so staff, our interpretation would include, hey, Webster, Mr. Webster in his dictionary has indicated that nightclub indicates floor performances. And so it's, it's covered. And it reduces the city's risk by not necessarily calling out that specific use, but lumps it together in that major and minor entertainment category that we already have within the city's code.
Major, which is already restricted when it comes to general size, traffic, etcetera, okay.
And so here's where we added, you'll see here where it has for additional standards, or specific standards, we added a D, that's why this is underlined here. Will come down, and that's, this is what will be added.
That will be added, but then we also have all the other conditional use criteria that we review.
Yes.
On top of that. So I, I feel this is meeting the intent of the commission, and it's mitigating, mitigating like any sort of, um.
So it's a major entertainment business.
Future risk, mhm. And the city attorney agreed.
I don't know if that's a match, there you go. What's your thought? Well, you would want, depending on the type of business it is, you would want to limit it from schools to as part of time, place, and manner.
I might go for just about any kind of entertainment, right? Because you're trying to keep the kids in the school, not.
Which depends, depends on what it is.
So if we look at those major entertainment uses, go back, sorry Dakota. If we scroll back up to the top.
All the schools in town are located right by residential, dropping, residential zones.
Not thousand feet.
So. Because all of those major entertainment uses are, are pretty big and substantial, and I have to say that we don't have any of those uses actually in Troutville at the moment, we don't have a zoo, we don't have multiple.
Some things could be classified as a zoo if you really stop.
So none, so none of those, so none of.
Well, we do have parks, I mean, theaters and museums.
We do, yes, we do have museums, um.
We don't just have a casino.
Those are more small.
But the, yeah.
Either minor, the museums that we have are considered minor.
Yeah, the museums that we do have are considered minor, yeah.
Yeah, by, by, like, we don't have an OZ, but we do have our needs that are smaller.
Our historical museum, right.
And, and the multiple screen theater that is in Gresham is more than a thousand feet away from the middle school.
Right.
So, this is gonna be a, a question for discussion here. Do we just wanna in, include like two hundred and feet, two hundred and fifty feet from residential and schools, or? And you don't have to make a decision now.
Yeah.
Like, we, we.
You don't have to, and I'll, I'll send it out.
You can let it simmer for a month, well, because we're coming, because we're coming back.
It's, yeah, that might have to simmer, I gotta take that one under advisement.
And of course, we'll send these out to everybody as well, so they can review in more detail. We just, I, since I haven't been back that long, I'm having to put it together. So adding these track changes in there, uh, and then we'll be continuing obviously to add more track changes to, we mentioned ago, we're on the bus with this pro package.
It might, it might be sticky in the sense that, yeah, you would wanna keep kids away from major entertainment when they're supposed to be in school, right? But you don't necessarily wanna keep them away from museums or zoos.
Right, so.
That does require a little more thought.
Might take a little more creativity, sorry, Ms. Palmer, is this.
So our discussion was that we would allow adult entertainment over that side of freeway. In this definition, we are just not allowing it in the downtown, in the town center area.
No, and two hundred and fifty feet, so if you, if we stuck with that two hundred and fifty foot number like last time? And so when we look at our zoning map here, it still applies.
Yeah, you would have to add some other buffers in there too. Two fifty would put it in the north section though. Or like thousand feet would. If you did like a thousand feet from a school or park, you're going north. Because it would limit the opportunity south.
What could I put one in safely?
No.
At more than a thousand feet from the school, oh, well, I was counting the amount of community colleges then.
Right, right now with that definition, you, you wouldn't be able to, because it's still two hundred and fifty feet from the residential area.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, all, so, this ar, so this area right here is the only area that's two hundred and fifty feet away, that's outside of the town center.
Okay, okay.
So you, you would be looking at these parcels for major entertainment uses, whether or not we were, we're ever gonna get them.
But also there, I mean, there would be other opportunity there for
Yeah.
entertainment which we might want, so.
Okay. So we're gonna simmer on that one a bit, except we're gonna.
Yeah, you're gonna simmer on all these, because we're, we're not making any.
We're not making, we're not making, we're not making a code amendment right now.
We're not getting any decisions.
We're still, we still have work to do on these.
I, I appreciate the input though, and checking with legal, and like, good, good legwork on that, that's great.
It is great.
I love your glasses, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
So the definitions are showing just what we have been discussing over the last few months, uh, with these track changes finally added.
Okay.
So, you know, still have them underlined and like, and, uh, straight through, though it's being removed. Uh, that way it's all there, because any edits obviously let us know. We can make sure to add the numbers after, uh, the written number. Same with here. So you, you'll see that throughout when I send this. These are just based on that spreadsheet that we've been kind of working on, going to add these. And then there are the ex, the new ones, so ED station has been added. And if you've noticed in this definition, I made sure I left neighborhood vehicles, neighborhood electric vehicles. That is, that is mentioned in our town center as a potential move forward, so that's why I wanted to keep that in there, so. Gym, there's a new one for gym, I know we had some discussion on that. And so here's the definition, and now I'll share based on what we had our last discussion, I'll go back to the use table. They're gonna set it down, set it down, set it down.
Usually includes a swimming pool?
That, see, you have to have that part for usually, even that's where the size comes in.
Okay.
Because larger facilities such as, you know, say, a LA twenty-four hour, um, those types of large facilities typically have a swimming pool. That's why it's not asked to, or that we don't keep it out of there, because that could cause problems later on, it has to be somewhere in the definition. And then, let's go up here, here you'll notice the track changes. So this is for commercial, the commercial zone, we added gyms. And with the two separate types of gyms, so gym up to five thousand square feet. Permitted, those are more studio style gyms such as the jujitsu studio, Pilates studio.
Orange Theory.
Yeah, Orange Theory, Snap Fitness, and then obviously anything above that, those are much larger. So those will require a little bit more discussion. And that's based on research, uh, of just kind of looking at the average size it is across for large scale gyms. Obviously, they're much larger than five thousand square feet, but the five thousand does give you, because you could have a yoga studio. I saw, they said of all the average yoga studios were like five, five hundred, six hundred, I don't think you need more than that. And then Snap Fitness is right around four thousand to five thousand, and then Orange Theory is same kind of thing, all stuff.
This will help.
Adding those in here are those for. Those are, and again, I'll send this out, but there's, those are the only changes far as, as, and I, but not, this is the only use table, this was what we're using. But these have all the use tables where we added gyms. Uh, this is the only, the. Uh, the, this is the only, the. Commercial zones are the only area that will have the additional standards, but because they're not permitted in anywhere else. As far as the discussion you're having with uh, major entertainment. Yeah, they're not, they're not permitted in any other zones. This is the only, only section that has to have that additional standard. And as we continue to work on this, uh, obviously we have this specific section. The goal is to have it be on the bus, so for example, like, make sure RoboCop's pointed out. There's a table missing from our code. There's several issues like that throughout the code that we've been noting since Nick and I started. And so we'll be making edits. If you ever see anything, please notify us, we have a running document. They're basically script readers referencing a section that's the longer there. Period is missing. I know, I think Mr. RoboCop's also sent me some, but I added, uh, referring to sections that are actually just the wrong numbers. They're just gonna be, they're just slightly off, so things like that. In the past, staffs always updated the code by hand. Now they're writing it out to typically, we send it out to a company who does that, uh, as a service. And so that's why our code is littered with several script readers.
And I do wanna say that that is changing. We have, um, a, we're changing our code, so it's gonna be online. MutiCode, I believe, is gonna be our service provider who will be updating our code with any future amendments. And when it gets up online, it'll be much easier for the public to search our development code.
And just to be clear. Okay, instead of spending fifty thousand dollars to work on the code last time. We elected to hire an additional planner. Okay? And we elected to do most of that work ourselves. And yeah, it took us a long time, there's some errors in it, and I'm sorry for that part, but I think that. The end of the day, you're probably more happy that you've got more help in your office.
Oh, yes.
A hundred percent.
Okay.
A thousand.
Cause that was kind of the choice at the time.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, I'm very happy that we got that, that we. I know when, I'll have to say, if I started, uh, before Eric came on board, there's no way just one of us could have done today and I've worked that again, so. Appreciate that.
I just know that over the years that we did it, we went through like. I'm not exaggerating, like five community development directors, four planning managers. It took like pushing three years and we had like thirty-five public meetings. That be about right, Paul?
I wasn't there for all that.
When we did that, so I mean, it was quite a process for us too.
Oh, definitely.
I have, that's, sounds about right when you're updating an entire code.
Yeah.
Code work is no joke. I mean, as we've, I've almost been here for a year now, we're still noticing small things and they're very simple things. That's why a lot of this can all be cleaned up with just an on the bus. One single code amendment cleans up a lot. Uh, but as we, but you won't notice that unless you're in it every single day, but we are noticing those small little things. I didn't notice some of them, Nick's mentioned them to me, Eric's mentioned them, we then mentioned them to her, you know, little things like that, that's just. As now we have three sets of eyes in the code daily, it's easier to find those little things and then fix them.
Yeah, definitely.
So I think just some things, uh, without, you know, with having to turn over and stuff, have just been kind of missed or not noticed. Uh, so that's why that's our, that's one of our first things that we're moving towards with this is I'm gonna, we're gonna be bringing together. A on the bus package to clean it up, and then at that point, it'll be a great spot to continue just working on.
Uh, I think in the end we get code that matches our intent better.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
That's what we want.
I think it was a good decision.
What's that?
Uh, hiring the planner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do something different if you, I don't understand.
So at the, so next, so next month at our next meeting, we'll have a bigger kind of package. Out to the commission and we'll try to get that up to, I think, as early as possible so, so you can have your eyes on it. So we'll come back for discussion on some of these things, um, that you're simmering on. We can have some robust conversations.
And just as a heads up, it's going to be separated out by just the sections that are needing to be changed. So right now, this is chapter two and chapter three that we've been looking at, so those are where we're at right now, but so with those others. They'll be different chapters rather than just, here's the entire code, go find them, track changes. Uh, so they'll be just broken out, um, based on the sections. And see, from what I've realized and Nick realized and Eric's realized, there's only a couple of like sections of it that have been slightly mistaken. Uh, slight, like, you know, slight, this is, it's not the entire code. So it won't, it'll be a long packet to look at, but it won't, you won't have to be searching through the entire code. That's what we're here to do.
Yeah, that's our job.
Okay. And so you're thinking of bringing that in August?
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
Okay, any issues with individuals for August fourteenth or? Sometimes we get into trouble in August.
That's true.
Vacation. Yeah.
That's my year.
You going anywhere?
Don't we have that, don't, don't we have that apartment at the complex in August?
No, that's getting moved.
Okay.
What's going over here? No. Okay, no issues with August fourteenth?
No.
Okay. Not seen it, okay.
And I, well, I think it's a perfect way for me to celebrate my one year of the city. It's back in here. You're not close though.
One year.
And I'm. I'm interested to be working here.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Really does.
Um, with that. Ms. Palmer?
Great, so I just have a couple of staff updates for the commission this evening. As you probably saw driving in here, Home Forward has started construction on that project right across the street and. We anticipate a, a press release going out soon about that project. And we anticipate that project wrapping up construction by the end of next year. So around December of twenty twenty-five. Um, Wayfinder Brewing, which is the Troutville Creative Project right down here on, is it Second and Buxton? Yes. That is gonna be receiving temporary, um, occupancy here shortly, and they're moving towards their final occupancy approvals.
Nice.
It's exciting. Away Days Brewing, which is the old city hall building, um, that is still moving forward. Uh, their plumber was just in getting the correct permits last week. So that work and construction is still going on. And we anticipate the pickleball for its opening up. Soon.
Apple what, I'm sorry?
The pickleball.
Oh, got it, yeah, yeah, cool.
The East County Pickleball this week.
That is?
That's it. If, if you have questions?
Any updates on Move?
Um, yes, so Move actually contacted me a couple of weeks ago. And stated that they anticipate opening within a hundred and eighty days, so I told them that's six months from now.
So they pulled some more permits?
All their permits have been issued. Um, and how fast they work is up to the, up to them.
Big building, you only got like one or two guys in there chasing it up. It's a big building, you've only got a couple of guys in there, kind of chase it along.
Well, they all pulled out. So they, like they, contractors back on the job now?
I don't know their construction schedule and I can't, I can't speak for Move.
Yeah, cause I understood that contractors pulled out for lack of payment and their permits have expired.
All I can, I, all I can tell the commission is.
They have the permits.
Yeah, they have the, they have the permits. Um, and they have told me specifically that they anticipate opening within a hundred and eighty days, six months from.
Okay, that means you see that that he's there.
I do have a quick question. I think, is it, am I right in saying that tomorrow the bid's closed for the park?
Next week, the eight, I, the eighteenth.
It's the eighteenth?
Yes, originally.
It was, it was extended a week.
It was extended a week.
Okay, alright, um, do we know how many we have in the tank so far?
That's a good question. I, I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay. All good.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah, do I have anything?
Yeah.
Well, um, appreciate the, the homework that our staff has been doing and I appreciate working with the commission and well, thank you.
I'll pass.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
My turn? I've got a couple of things. I had a question raised. We had the approval for the used car lot going in next to the Honda dealership.
Yes.
The measurement for how many parking spots, customer parking spots would be required is based on the size of the building. And I was thinking, there should be another measure based on the size of the lot. Cause I can, you know, there's some used car dealers in particular, they'll have like a. An office trailer in the parking lot, and it's like a thousand square feet. So under our regulation, that only calls for one parking space, right? And this, this one, you know, next to the Honda dealership, based on their building size, was fifteen or sixteen spaces. But that, the space inside the building isn't really being occupied by customers, either. Service space and sales offices. I, I'm giving a specific example. The empty lot south of the Shell Station on two fifty-seventh, nor- or north, north of the Shell Station, two fifty-seventh.
Yeah.
That's zones, general commercial. So if somebody paved that over and parked a, uh. Construction or an office trailer on it, they'd only be, they'd only be required to have one customer parking space, right? Under the current regulations.
I don't know, I think we would prohibit the trailer actually, because a construction trailer is a.
If, if you consider it a temporary.
A te- yeah, a temporary structure.
But with what you're mentioning is it's based on gross floor area. And then that is what it's, so with the structure, if it's a thousand square feet, uh, for the gross floor area, that's one parking space. Uh, per, um, so if that scenario, if they put a thousand square foot structure on it, then, you know, they'd have to meet at least that minimum. And that is, I believe the intent, when that was put in, and it was done prior to me being here. But the intent is that way you have larger lot, smaller showroom, have air enough, uh, spaces for your inventory. Because, yeah, traditionally, there's not a whole lot of customers that come and get it a single given time. Uh, I believe that was the intent of that speaking.
And I guess your concern would probably be that they would have more customers than that and would spill over to on-street parking, right?
Right. The other idea I had is, um, Joe Storage, he usually does a column in the.
Champion?
City, city newspaper. The last two cases we've had, one on Hewitt, where they had the addition on the backside of his house, the one tonight actually. I'd like to put, have Joe maybe write something about when people see something that doesn't look like it might not be approved. To notify the city before it's a done deal. Like that one on Hewitt, for example, that happened to be in the development where we live. I didn't know about it till I saw it for sale on Realtor dot com. If that, you know, if that had been going on, going up in the backyard next to my house. I would have been on the phone to Joe the next day. None of the neighbors said anything. It was completely built out, same deal with the Spence, completely built out before anybody says anything. So if Joe could maybe.
Yep.
Encourage people to, you know, say something that, when it doesn't look quite right.
We can put something in the champion that talks about when you need a permit.
There you go.
And for, and for what? We can definitely do that.
So if Joe drove by that fence, he could do something about it, right?
Mhm.
Other city people can.
Well. Joe responds to complaints.
Right.
Generally, the city is a complaint-driven city.
Right.
Meaning if the public's unhappy with something.
But if Joe drove by that fence and saw it. He could potentially stop it.
Could, could, yes.
Yes.
He, he is proactive, he is proactive occasionally.
And he, and he is proactive.
Right. But it sounded like if you drove by it, you wouldn't necessarily.
Technically, I wouldn't be able to, cause, yeah, I'm, I'm employed by the city where I, well, I. Help Joe with his code compliance, cause he comes and works with us very closely, I don't think this would be me. I could drive around the city and point out many things that I should be, but that's cause I'm in it every day and we can get to be a nuisance to others. Uh, and they need to be the ones notifying us. Call Joe first.
And a city will probably, yeah.
You would have so many.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you would.
They'd be everywhere.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, um. I think that's, I was just gonna say, Home Forward was the one that we denied, but counsel through.
Correct, through a development agreement.
Just. Put that out, he's very good.
No, don't be sorry. Oh, I do have one more staff comment, so. Um, I just wanna direct people to, uh, the planning website. There's a little button called active projects now. And, um. On there, we talk about CFA, climate-friendly equitable communities. We have a project page for that with some documents. And then we also have a project page for our, um, wildfire grant from the state marshal's office. And there's some other projects I'll be adding to that list within the next couple of weeks.
I did get asked on that, how did the neighborhoods get picked for the wildfire?
So, uh, that, the neighborhood that got picked for that, specifically for that grant was picked because. Those neighborhoods are, are close to the ravine, um, right in that area that's, um, you know. Pretty well established and, and overgrown, so we're doing some activities to reduce the fuel. What, within that ravine. And specifically Sandy Palisades, that's a large neighborhood with. Over five hundred homes and there's one access point. So we wanna do some education within that neighborhood for evacuation routes as well as fuel reduction. And when we held the neighborhood social a few weeks ago, we listened to the neighbors and we asked them. What kind of activities would you like to have that address fuel reduction, um, and wildfire risk? And they provided us some, um, tasks that we could do for the neighborhoods. That was really good, to get that feedback from them specifically what they want.
Sandy Palisade, can't you get into that from Troutville Road too?
No.
No.
No, it's a single access point.
It's a single access point.
And we were, our dumpsters were full pretty quick on that one.
They were. That was a very successful project.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, next year is the one off Troutville Road, right?
Yes. We're doing. We're doing, um, Strawberry.
That's your.
Strawberry Meadows.
Strawberry Meadows, and then the Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek subdivision, up right along the edge.
Jackson Park.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But we can look at the map, we can look at the map.
We just, they're down in the gully.
Okay.
It's in behind the sugar pine and Glenada Park, that road that goes back along the river there.
It's the area that would burn before Sandy Palisades.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can definitely take a look at that area.
Yeah, so if you look at what she was mentioning, it's kind of the hydrodenser area, this, with the ash coming down during the gorge fire.
Right, we did.
Especially with the east winds.
Right.
I lived there, and my car was covered with ash. I moved out.
Because of the ash?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're on the subject of fire, um, I think it was the Gresham Madelik posted a fire log from Gresham Fire Department for the Fourth of July. By, by address, I think there were four Fourth of July fires in Troutdale, a couple vegetation fires.
All right up in our area, then.
Yeah. One, one of, one of them was half a block from our house. I never saw the fire truck.
Yeah.
I was so frustrated to hear them still going off like last two days, and it's like the hottest day, what are you doing?
Yeah.
We had, we have aerial displays from our house.
You don't have to be smart to have a light.
That side two fifty-seventh, don't know if, and pretty soon, because we're right by the fire station, fire trucks. And it down Sturgis, there was some, went down in there.
Yeah, my neighbor had, the other night had a huge bonfire in their backyard.
After the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
I think Milwaukee County has a burn back.
It does.
They do, but when you're beyond the line of scrimmage out there, you, you know, you usually get left alone. But, um, with that, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, I'd like to thank staff for the presentation and their work. And we will see everyone next month. That, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Zach, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second to adjourn, all those with favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.